This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll catch up on the minutes with the first part.
Okay, we have a second for Justine. Any discussion, otherwise we'll go to the vote. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, aye. All those against? None, so Justine, thank you for being secretary to the Budget Committee. I'd like to open the public hearing for possible uses of state revenue sharing funds. Chad, will you describe what we have?
I'd be happy to, Councilor Smith, thank you very much. State revenue funds and state revenue sharing funds are funds that come to us from the state of Oregon. It's part of sharing their taxes based on what they receive in a city apportionment. Now, generally, what we receive from state revenue is about $20,000 per year. And actually, it's more close to 25, we could make an adjustment for that if we need to. And we currently have 35,300 resources as we have 15,000 left over from last year, primarily from us not using funds for specific city uses. State revenue sharing detailed expenditures, as they are now, are just kind of a placeholder. The people that are in the expenditure descriptions are folks that received last year and were distributed quite early. We are distributing those funds quickly. So we have the approximate 35,300 left over and we have a lot of different requests that we've received within the time period that those were required. And those were in your packet. In your packet, Christie has provided us with a grant donation request sheet. Those information, amounts of people have requested. Most of them are the same as we've done before, some of them are a little new. And we have some people here on the call, ready to speak about their requests. It's not required, it's only preferred that people are here to speak. After that, what this goes, usually we open up the public hearing. Folks, in an order that Counselor Smith could choose or open, then can describe what it is that they want to do. The council will hear those things out and then we'll make decisions later in the agenda. Any questions?
Chad, I have a question. So all of the funds that were allocated last year, they've all been distributed to their recipients?
Yes, ma'am.
So the unappropriate amount available is not from the former revenue sharing fund, right? They're from the city?
Primarily. But station maintenance was $10,000. Then we had materials and services was $5,000. Celebration is, yes.
Okay, I have one more question. I'm on the board of one of these applying agencies. So I'm not allowed to vote, is this correct?
I think that would be wise, although...
Am I allowed to ask questions?
Well, as far as ethics goes, and Carrie, you're a bit of an expert on this. I mean, it doesn't do anything to change your fiscal. You're not making any money off this particular organization, are you?
No.
But you would probably be able to talk about it also and help out. Carrie, would you have any, Counselor Smith, would you have any concerns with that?
As long as Rita isn't voting, she can participate after declaring a possible conflict of interest because of her situation with the board.
So I will not vote, but I might ask questions of different agencies. And let me know if you think anything I'm asking is inappropriate.
All right.
Thank you.
At the end, we'll try to remember that we will separate the state revenue sharing when we vote for the budget at the end. We will go ahead and take care of the state revenue sharing.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing. And the visitors, are there any visitors that would like to speak toward this subject? And because I can see Kitty's on the call, I will go to Kitty first because she's with the Trails and Art Association, aren't you?
That's great. Would you like me to explain the project?
You could give us the background of why you're asking for what you're asking, and that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Well, we need a new roof. And we got, we went ahead and got bids and we had one pretty good bid. And we're almost halfway there. Normally, we would make the money in our summer workshops. But last year, you know, was really hard in 2020. And this year, we had to lower our hours. So we're not getting the commissions or being able to have in-person workshops. We're going to try some this summer, but not bringing in people from nationally known artists. So we're kind of struggling here and thought that we would go ahead and ask for about $5,000 if we could. And we'd be able to do the project this summer.
Does anyone have any questions for Kitty?
Brian, are you? Yeah, it took me a minute to find my mic button, sorry. Kitty, are you applying to other organizations or entities for funding for your roof? Or are we going to be it except for the normal fundraising sale?
Right. Yeah, we got donations for about 3,000 of it. And we started last year, but we have about 3,000 in donations from other people. And we have enough money to do the last little bid. I think it's an 85, it's an 8,500 is the most recent bid. So we did get it, but I wish we had gotten more. I don't like to apply for something if we don't have at least half. But we have some great donors sometimes that'll step in too.
Thank you.
Hey Kitty, this is Chris. And I'd just like to offer, one of the things that we put in this year's request was to specify how the money was to be used for Gearheart. And it's clear Trails End is going to be used for Gearheart. So thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions for Kitty? Okay, well, then I'll go to the next visitor. I'm sorry, but I don't have little stickers on the pictures saying that this is a visitor and this isn't. So I'm going to go Bob Shortman, no, Norm Brown, you're on the Budget Committee.
Were you asking me something?
No, Bob, no, I'm not.
Oh, okay.
Norm, Chad, is Norm Brown on the Budget Committee? I don't even have a list of...
Seaside Hall?
Seaside Hall, thank you, Norm. Do you want to speak?
I do.
Okay.
Chris Glock and we're also, and Al Carter, we're the three other people. So really, Bob Shortman and Chris Glock are on the committee.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be able to speak with you. I think some of you may know of the Seaside Hall from previous appearances in front of Gearheart and the Budget Committee. We are an organization that manages a house that supports 12-step recovery meetings. And this year, we're hoping to improve part of our parking lot, which is currently just crushed rock. And we hope to pave that or to allow for two handicap parking spaces so that our meetings are more accessible to people with transportation issues or mobility issues. Even the chairman of our board just had his knee redone. But I think he might need some additional help getting up to the meeting, you never know. But again, it's, we think it's a significant improvement. We've gotten one bid that's about $6,000. And there may be more expenses for striping and the appropriate signage. And the last year has kind of thrown us into an interesting situation as we were certainly impacted by shutting down our meetings during a period of the year based on COVID restrictions. That impacted, negatively impacted our revenue stream. And it's a big question now, is what this year is going to, what kind of a recovery are we going to see? And what kind of revenue stream we're going to see? But we also received an increase in our rent expenses from the actual owners of the Seaside House or the Seaside Hall. So we're going to try and receive some additional funding. So we are hopeful and we thank you for the opportunity to apply to the City of Gearheart. And if I could address the question that was asked, it, best of my knowledge, there are no hosted 12-step meetings in Gearheart. So anyone in a 12-step recovery program who wants to attend a meeting goes somewhere else, and the closest place is the Little Yellow House in Seaside. So all the work on our facility, I think, definitely will benefit residents of Gearheart.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Norm. All right, Ellen Long, I believe you're next. I cannot hear you. Ellen, I cannot hear you. Would you turn up your microphone?
Looks like her microphone is on. So Ellen may have to go ahead and close out the program, Ellen, and then come back in again.
When she was speaking earlier, there was a very long delay from the time that she spoke to the time it came over the computer.
Okay, so now she's...
And now, now there's nothing.
Ellen, you want to try to, yeah, you're going to have to restart your program on there. So go ahead and go out and then come back in and we can carry on. And then we'll see you when you get back.
Okay, so Ellen, I'm going to pass over you and go to Darren while you shut down your program and come back on. Darren?
Okay, hopefully you guys can hear me. Super, all right, fantastic. Well, I'm here tonight, I'm representing two organizations tonight. So I will start off with the Sunset Empire Park and Recreation District Foundation. We came before you last year also, much the same format in the Zoom. Only difference is I changed my background a little bit, so that's new for this year. So, but we are requesting $3,000 in support of our scholarship program. We are able to give out scholarships for Park and Recreation District programming. It covers all kinds of things from youth programs, so our after-school program, our emergency childcare program after we opened from COVID last year that we provided for first responders and frontline healthcare workers, swim lessons, pottery classes. And currently, we had about 29 families during 2020 that took part in the scholarship program. About eight or nine of those families were residents of Gearheart. So there's definitely some benefit coming to the folks who live in Gearheart as well as part of this program. So we were able to give out about $13,000 last year, down kind of considerably from prior years. Prior year, we'd been up around $21,000 for the scholarship program that we've been able to give out. Last year, obviously, we were a little paper, we didn't have some of our big fundraisers. Again, this year, we weren't able to move forward with the Sip and Savor. It's one of our largest fundraisers, usually brings in pretty close to $20,000 for scholarships. So we did have to do a little retooling this year. But our foundation members are crafty folks and they came up with a couple of fundraising ideas. One of them, we moved forward on this year, we created 200-piece puzzles. We got a couple of photos from Don Frank, I don't know if anybody knows Don, really fabulous photographer, and turned those into puzzles with the help of Andrew Stein and Logotac. And so we've got those for sale at the front lobby of the Sunset Pool and the Bob Chisholm Community Center for $25 apiece. We've been actually doing really well with sales on those. So I'm really hopeful that we could get some revenue back into the program this year through that piece, some other donations. Of course, obviously, we've reached out to City of Seaside and the City of Cannon Beach as well. So that's kind of our program this year. So just asking for 3,000 for our scholarship program. So any questions?
Okay, so Darren, you got another foundation or...
Actually, the other organization is the South County Community Food Bank. We serve folks from all over South County with a three-to-five-day supply of emergency food. Although these days during COVID, we've been giving out probably a little closer to 10 days' worth of food. As most folks will tell you, in the food banking industry right now, things have slowed down a little bit. It's a little bit counterintuitive to what we've, what we would thought we would be experiencing during COVID, you know, folks being laid off and things of that sort. Actually, one of the things that stands out to us is that currently, folks are getting double food stamps under the CARES Act. And that program is set to expire in the first part of September. So, you know, even though we've been able to stockpile some, a little bit of money, if you look through our financials, you know, we're doing pretty good. But my biggest fear, I think, is what's going to happen after the double food stamps expire. I have this really big fear that, that, you know, folks will be kind of knocking the doors down to get back in and will probably meet or exceed what our normal numbers would be for those coming into the food bank looking for some assistance. So we are asking for $5,000 this year in support of our programming. It enables us to purchase food that we need to continue serving our clients. And what I can only anticipate is going to be a very, very busy, very, very busy fall. So Rita, I'll definitely be counting on you to be sitting at the front desk.
Thank you. Darren, I have a question, not about the food bank, but about the Sunset Empire District. When you say scholarships, these are not educational scholarships? Is this just scholarships to use the park and recreation district?
Yeah, it's, yeah, exactly, exactly. In most cases, most of our recipients receive 50% off of the programming fees. So, you know, when you're talking about a monthly pass, that may not seem like a substantial amount. But when you're looking at a young family with, you know, one or two kids in our after-school program where, you know, the cost of that, or summer camp, where the cost of that is something much higher, you know, along the order of about $300 to $400 a month, that actually becomes a very substantial, very substantial savings for those families. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So any questions on the food bank?
Darren, this is Chris, thank you, by the way. And Don Frank is my neighbor, so it's...
I can't imagine a better neighbor.
In getting to the South County, and please let me know if my voice is too loud, what percentage of the grant is used to purchase food versus cover operating expenses?
Yeah, 100% of that goes towards food. So, yeah, yeah.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just a quick question on the scholarship. Does your accounting system earmark a percentage of what Gearheart might provide you as a grant to go specifically to Gearheart residents, or is it a pool?
It's a pool, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because we operate two separate systems. So our foundation has one financial accounting system and our park and recreation has our registration and accounting system. So when folks come in to sign up with, you know, that are receiving a scholarship, they're going to sign up with the Park and Recreation District through our point-of-sale system. And then at the end of every quarter, I pull out a report on scholarship recipients or how much scholarship was used. And then, and then that gets sent over to the foundation and the foundation reimburses the Park and Recreation District for all of the scholarships that were incurred during that quarter.
Okay, so the grant request is a reasonable estimate of your expectations in serving Gearheart?
Correct.
Based on history?
Exactly, Chris, exactly.
Okay, thanks, Darren.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Darren? Thank you very much, Darren. I'm going to move along to John Carter.
I'm John Carter, I'm just here in support of Norm Brown. We both are with the Seaside Hall, I'm the chairman of the board.
Okay. Do you have anything you wish to say as a visitor, besides your support for Norm Brown and the Little Yellow House?
Well, as Norm has expressed, we've had some trying times with, at the beginning of last year, we had to close the house for several months and reopen it in June to meetings. And nobody came rushing in to open up their meetings because of the restrictions. So the meetings were small and not happening every day. So we're slowly kind of attracting meetings back into the house, but we're still got a ways to go to get back up to the revenue from the meetings. We charge the meetings a $9 fee for using the house for an hour. And that's the main source of our income. And when we only have four or five meetings a week, we still have the full amount of rent we have to pay and, of course, the utilities and so forth. So we've had some donations, private donations from the community. And from some of the meetings that are not meeting are making donations of something equivalent to their rent, but not regularly. So, you know, we're doing okay, but we have, the building was built in 1910, so it has some things that need to be taken care of from time to time. And that's what we use the grant money for is we've got the parking lot project that Norm has mentioned is one where we want to make the house more accessible to the handicap. And it just makes life easier for the people in the community. So that's about all I got to have, and thank you.
Thank you, John. I will ask, does anyone have any questions for John? If not, Chad, has anyone emailed you? Or do you know of anyone who has any questions in the visitor section for this budget hearing?
Double check.
For state revenue hearing, excuse me?
Sure, I'll double check, I'll be right back.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Bob.
Oh, where's this Little Yellow House at?
It's on Third Avenue, just east of Holiday. It's right next door to the United Methodist Church.
Okay.
It's yellow, it's easy to see.
Okay, yellow. And you...
That's why we call it the Little Yellow House.
Okay, well, I assume so.
That's a great name for it.
Do you rent it out to all groups?
It's only in recovery groups. It's primarily Alcoholics Anonymous and Narcotics Anonymous. Those are the main functions. By the charter of our, by the bylaws of our operation with the Methodist Church owns the house. And so we set up that that's what the house would be used for. And it's not open 24/7, it's only open during meetings, so it's a secure building.
Okay, thank you.
So in a follow-up, have you approached the Methodist Church for donations? That would cover your operating expenses, like paving parking lots?
Well, they've mentioned that they would possibly be cooperating in that. They've been out of, they have not had any church services since March of last year. And they just started about two weeks ago having some Sunday services. So their income level is extremely low. And what they do for us is they give us a favorable rental on the house itself. So that's their contribution to our, what we do is they give us a good rent and then we take care of all the maintenance of the building. So it's a bargain between the two of us.
Okay, thank you.
Chad? Did you see anyone on the visitor?
I have not received anything and Christie did not forward me anything, so nothing so far.
Well, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing for the state revenue sharing.
Excuse me?
Thank you very much for coming out and speaking.
Didn't we, we lost someone that was having audio difficulties?
Hi, this is Ellen.
Oh, Ellen, you're back, there she is.
I'm on the phone with you.
Oh, okay, I see you now. I'm so sorry, Ellen, for just being right by you.
Well, that's, that's... Do you have time to hear a little bit about the harbor?
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay, good, thank you. Sorry from whatever the problem was. But anyway, we're, the harbor is very pleased to propose some grant award, some, excuse me, financial support request. For overall, the harbor, I think most of you know, is, our office is in Astoria, but we are a countywide agency. We serve, we're a nonprofit, and we serve domestic abuse, sexual assault and stalking survivors. We also have a shelter, which right now is running at 50% capacity. And the ability to house people beyond that capacity is an expensive one because it means that we have to put folks in hotels and then provide for their daily needs for the survivors and their children. And one of the countywide things that we do is the D-START program. It's the Domestic Sexual Assault Response Team. And we, along with our partners in the medical fields and the emergency rooms, along with law enforcement, do 24-hour service, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And those D-START folks who are advocates work for us. And they go out, if requested, any time of the night or day. And they do that throughout the county, in unincorporated areas, wherever there's a safe place or when we've been asked to accompany, uses police or the medical assistance. It's been really hard with the pandemic, of course, for all of us. It's been especially bad... all of us. It's been especially bad in the realm of abuse, because as you can imagine, with COVID, many times, abusers and those they're abusing are isolated, to begin with, in rural areas. And COVID has made that even worse. Our responses and requests for emergency shelter and services, both D-SART and walk-in services or emergencies that happen during the day, have gone up almost 50%. And it's been, it's been a real struggle for us, as many businesses and agencies have experienced, trying to meet the needs of our folks within the structure of COVID response. It's still ongoing. Normally, we can have 12 people, 12 fam, four families, up to 12 people. Right now, that is the maximum of either two families or six individuals, or four individuals, I'm sorry. And so a multitude of avenues have closed off. People have been generous in helping to support our work throughout the county. And we appreciate the support of Gearheart. We know that regardless of where abuse or assault occurs, it's a community issue, it's a community problem, and a community responsibility. And we've been happy to have gotten support from Gearheart. We have clients there. We don't necessarily identify our clients by location. We often will identify them by the place that they consider safe, and we pick them up. Some don't want to divulge their locations or any of that. And we do have confidentiality for all services that we provide for survivors. We don't charge anybody for anything, all of the services, however short or long they may be. We can be as long as 90 days in shelter, or as short as just a couple of nights, until someone can be, achieve a safety plan and safety. So we, we count on our cities and our county to really help us as the most prominent activity that we do throughout the county, which is the 24-hour response. It's also managing the 24-hour response and the shelter on a 24-hour basis. And then being able to respond when people leave and are seeking safety, and they leave with nothing. They leave with hardly a backpack and the clothes that they're wearing. And we try our best to safety plan and give people the daily needs, meet, meet their daily needs for food, for diapers, for shoes, emergency equipment, school equipment for kids who might have left that all behind. So that's our, that's our wide and broad services. And I tried to hone in a bit on how that serves all of our counties and all of our cities, because one person who has helped is a success. More, the more help that we get, the more we can reduce the acts of violence that are perpetrated throughout our county. And we are very happy to have been notified to put in a solicitation for a grant this year. We've asked for $5,000, and that, all of that money would be spent through the emergency services, supporting the D-SART staff, and as well as the, the daily needs of our clients who are in flight from abuse or assault. Does anybody have any questions?
Ellen, I have a question. Where does most of your funding, where does most of your funding come from?
Most of the, the majority, well, I'd say between 40 and 60% comes either from the state or from the federal programs that fund services for women. The Office of Violence Against Women is a big one. We get some money through the health organizations at the federal level. Usually, it comes down from the federal level to the state, and then the state manages the individual grants out to organizations like ours. And that's probably, as I said, it's between 40 and 60 in any given year. And we really are just beginning to see what next year might hold. And our request is, would be starting for our fiscal year July 1. So we do, sure, we do fundraising activities too, but the most of it is earmarked money for programs like ours.
I think, Ellen, what might have been helpful is, and maybe I've missed it, but I don't see a balance sheet identifying income and expenses that all other grant requesters have submitted?
I am fairly sure that we submitted everything that was requested. I can look at our list and see. But it was, it was, I'd be happy to do that. Do you want a program balance sheet? Or, and if I don't have it, I can send it to you right away. Do you want an organization balance sheet?
It gets back to Rita's question. You know, the amount of income you have coming in from the various sources, and then the expenses to go with that. In particular, like overhead, which it looks like your grant request is all going to administrative overhead support?
The, no, it's, I think $500 is earmarked for overhead, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it said on your, it said on your cover letter that, that you were including a copy of the profit-loss statement on a PDF, and I don't think I have that in the package.
That was not included. There was a very limited program budget for just the amount of the request, but not, not an overall.
Well, I'm sure we have those. And I apologize if you did not get them. I will make sure and send them to Justine. I will also, I should be able to track what, exactly what I sent. And I'd be happy to send anything that you want. If you want the full agency budget, I can give you that, a balance sheet. Do you want a balance sheet for the current year or for last year?
I think last year would be sufficient.
Okay.
But thank you very much. I really appreciate seeing that.
Absolutely. And I will, again, I will look, look back at the attachments that I sent and make sure that you get everything that was requested. So I'm happy to do that. It's something that most people, yes, it's, it's nothing out of the ordinary. We're used to it, and I'm just surprised it didn't get there. I'm happy to send it.
You said you were sending a copy, but on the attachment, it wasn't included in the attachment. So I'm, just letting you know. That would be, really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Happy to do that.
And, and thank you for clarifying the 3K, the 1,500K, and the 500K. So that, that's helpful for us as well.
Good, good. And I will get those, those financial, is there, should I just send them to Justine, to you? I think I, that's, okay.
Ellen, that would be great. You can't see on your phone, can you?
No, I can't. Thank you very much. We really appreciate the support. Bye.
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 Counselor Smith, may I ask a quick question?
You may.
So is this what you're looking for, Chris, in addition to the Harbor D-SART operating budget?
I believe, Rita, is that what you're looking for? Are you looking for more detail?
Well, she included that she was going to send a copy of the D-SART budget, but she also indicated that she was going to send a profit loss, but she did not send it as an attachment. So it was just something that she just forgot, probably forgot, because she said she was going to send it. But I know what you're looking, you're looking at the D-SART operating budget, and I'd like a little more about it than that.
Yes. And no, Chad, that's not what I was looking for. We've got a copy of that. Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, and I haven't missed anybody else, Brad? Then I'm going to close the public hearing for the state revenue sharing, if that's all right with everybody. And now we'll move on to the budget, and we'll receive the, buzz it, buzz it, the budget message from Chad.
That's all right, Carrie. Wait till I twist my tongue on some of these numbers a little bit later. But thank you very much, folks, volunteers. I put up the budget message here up on the screen, and then we will have it on the website here a little bit later. And I hope everybody can see that. For those of you that are on the phone, Dan cannot, but I'll go ahead and read this budget message. So as of May 5th, this is a pleasant budget officer for the city of Gearheart. It is my privilege to present the proposed 2021-2022 budget, budget committee for review. One, as presented, the information in the budget document indicates the anticipated resources and requirements of the city of Gearheart for the fiscal year 2021-22, and is in accordance with budget law. Two, the proposed budget includes the appropriations necessary to operate the city's departments for the fiscal year, as well as two years of historical data and last year's budgeted numbers. Appropriations for reserve funds are also included within the budget. Though the Gearheart, or excuse me, the general fund anticipated resources for the fiscal year are $2,568,201 from various sources. While revenue is increasing, our municipal tax rate remains the same at $1.05 per thousand. The 3.9% conservative increase of city tax revenue is appropriate due to the amount of new development in 2020 and 2021, and increased property values. Another main source of revenue is the transient room tax, or the TRT, which is anticipated to be $380,000, and is a $130,000 increase over last year's budgeted amount. Room taxes and hoopla locations are expected to be similar to this year because of the COVID-19 pandemic and pent-up demand for travel. Last year, the TRT was underestimated, not anticipating COVID would increase travel to Gearheart. We budgeted building permits at $200,000 for 2020, 2021, and we've received already $235,000 with May and June still to come. We may see a drop in future building permit fees as available building, buildable lands in Gearheart is reduced, because our available buildable lands are in decline. The city tax rate is permanent and remains unchanged at $1.05 per thousand of property value, and $0.02 per thousand of Gearheart Road District.
Chad?
Yes, sir.
Um, isn't our tax rate 1.053 and not 1.53? Otherwise, that would be $1.53.
Yeah, no, we're, we're at $1.053, so one half of a cent.
Okay. I see how you're saying it. All right. Thank you.
Gets me every year. Like I said, I was going to be a little tongue-tied. There you go. Thank you for that. All right. And what did I leave off? Let's see, the TRT.
Road District.
Yeah, thank you. The city's actually in Road District, page two. Included in the budget are appropriations necessary to implement the city's personnel costs. The cost of living adjustment increase of 1.3% for the Social Security Administration is applied to salaries this year, but it begins January 1st, 2022. Gearheart Reserve Funds will again receive additional resources this year. The proposed state revenue sharing fund expenditures will be finalized after citizens' input at the public hearing. Be advised that we receive approximately $20,000 annually from the state revenue sharing. Over the years, we have had a surplus cash carry forward in this fund through the generation approval of past budget committees. Most of these funds have now been spent, and this may require the budget committee to look at the number of grants given in the future. This year's budget is unique in that the city of Gearheart may receive $330,000 from the American Rescue Plan approved by Congress. The guidance for the use of these funds comes out May 11th, after our budget meetings. Research indicates that these funds may be used for infrastructure planning and emergency response. We were a little surprised by how the economy fared this last fiscal year. Looking forward, factors such as pent-up travel demand, interest rate, relief funds, supply chain, housing, and material prices, et cetera, will factor into the next fiscal year. Thank you, Chad Sweet, Budget Officer, City Administrator. Thank you. All right. All right. So this, you lose, Carrie?
Chad, are we going to go line item through each page?
I was going to discuss that with you folks. So in the past, I've gone line by line, and that was very difficult for a lot of people to take. Took a long time. In the past, we talked about general fund resources, and then we kind of categorized each individual expenditure area. For example, it's, we bring up the administrative personnel services, the materials and services. And after mentioning each of those, I would ask if there'd be any questions. And at the beginning, I would, I may enter in some information that's pertinent to either the increase or the decrease, or something else that was significant. We can start that way. And if that works well for you folks, or if you want more detail, we can go from there.
I, I just want to point out, it looks like we have a new nonprofit grant requester hanging on the call. So how do we want to deal with that, Mr. Chairman?
Well, now, I'm uncertain as to whether we can open a public hearing that's already been closed. I suppose by a majority vote, we could reopen the public hearing, though that precludes anybody else from speaking that might be interested in speaking. So if the majority votes for reopening the public hearing, we will listen to George and his presentation. And if we have a lack of majority, then we will not. Sorry, George.
It's, I'm sorry. I thought it started at 6 o'clock.
Right. So all those in favor of listening to George, say aye.
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 All those against? All right, George, you have three minutes or so to give us your spiel.
Well, we're, we are in Gearheart, in the North Coast Plaza. And, you know, we do at least 25% of our people are from Gearheart. And, yeah, we just try to get them food and get them financial aid, or more, more on food than financial aid, but we do both. And, yeah, I don't have a lot of other, our numbers are down a little bit, but everybody's food stamps. You know, our people have food stamps right now, or extra money in it, in the stimulus money. So it's kind of nice that we just, you know, if they don't need us, they don't use us. But we know that's going to change. So that's why I'm, we've asked for a grant. So is there any questions? That's about all I have.
That'll do it. Okay, George, thank you very much. If there's no questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. So open and close is the public hearing again, and we are on to the non-line item budget.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Smith and Budget Committee. And again, the Budget Committee, the nice thing about budget law, it's a little bit more informal, so you can make those kinds of adjustments anytime you like, Counselor Smith. Right. So the first page of the budget that I have is a quick memo that I'd like to talk to you about later, but as it will retain two to resources. I'm on page one in the general fund resources. This year, the cash carry forward for the city of Gearheart is actually what we did not spend the year before, and it goes back into the general fund the year after. Everything is fairly normal. We've seen a larger-than-anticipated Everything is fairly normal. We've seen a larger-than-anticipated tax increase because the amount of building that happened the year before and this year. We show on a line, it says here line six, about the $230,000 increase for the American Rescue Plan. Now, I hope to make that clear in the memo that I sent. We're anticipating to receive $330,000. I added this so far, just as a talking point, to three different funds. $230,000 in the general fund, $75,000 in the water fund, and $25,000 in the Road District. Those are separate funds, so they don't, the 75 and the 25 don't intermesh with the general fund. Other things is note, the GRFPD, it's approximately $224,000 on the right-hand column. That is the Gearheart Rule Fire Protection District. The Gearheart Rule Fire Protection District pays us to provide emergency fire and rescue services, and that is a 3% increase as per contract. And they are approximately, and have been throughout the history, about 50% of our calls that we run for Gearheart Fire. That area is outside the limits of Gearheart. Building permits, again, we, last year, bided 200, but so far, we're at 235. Anticipate next year at 250,000. Could be more, it could be less. But just, you know, it's so difficult to get these days. I was a little wrong this year, but thankfully it worked out in our favor. We always try to be very conservative. Let's see, miscellaneous income, we can talk about a little bit later. Another large amount is the transient room taxes you see.
Excuse me, Chad, should we be asking questions as we go, or do you want to wait till?
I'll just give a quick synopsis, and then you folks can ask questions if that works okay.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah, firefighting revenue and wildland conflict, conflagration, I put $80,000 in, in there in anticipation of sending our firefighters to fires. I way underestimated those in the past, so we were putting that $80,000 just in case, so it makes it a little bit easier for us to distribute into the firefighters and fire equipment. So, any questions so far on the revenue resources?
Yeah. Chad, I've, I've got a question. It's about building permits. What's, has there been any long-term forecast? Kind of estimated, because eventually you're going to run out of space in Gearheart to build, right? Do, do we have kind of an estimate if that could be five years from now or 10 years? Is it not something to worry about? Or when is kind of the the leverage point where it's something to start worrying about that that income revenue source is going to go down?
Uh, thank you, Chris. And as the counselors know, this is kind of a complicated issue right now that we're discussing here in Gearheart. Essentially, Department of Land Conservation and Development will allow Gearheart or municipalities to expand once they've been through a certain portion of their buildable lands. It's really a 20-year look back or look forward. Do you have enough buildable land for the next 20? The way that they go ahead and calculate that basically is, over the last 20 years, how much building did you do? They average that and push it forward to the next years, and that's just really basic. So it doesn't really talk about the last few years that building has been very, very busy. So the buildable lands inventory, we're having some more discussions about and some clarification. But what that does is, let's say we do find that there are diminishing lands, as there are, and we're starting to get few and fewer building permits. That's one of the trigger points among many others that Gearheart could possibly do in expansion. Uh, now, Gearheart's not keen on expanding necessarily because of its, um, it's a comprehensive plan, but there are some areas to where that's possible. So at this point, I'm not worried about it, but the nice thing about the way that Gearheart runs is our building permits, plumbing permits, and all of that, that money has to be used in the building department or in statute. So if those decline, so do our expenses. We do not have a person on staff that does the building permit process or their assistant. They're both contract, or they are both contractors with us. It's their own company that does work for Gearheart, so it will adjust.
Okay, thanks.
Chad, could you explain accounting land sales for a dollar?
Sure. I'm anticipating making a lot of money there. Uh, so county land sales, there is a potential that county land sales within Gearheart or within the area that the city of Gearheart could benefit from it. The $1 is a placeholder. If I have $0 for three years in a row, then that line item is supposed to go over. So you'll occasionally.
Thank you.
And Chad, I had a question. Uh, building permits looks like increased 25, or the estimate is 25% higher than last year's budget. But plumbing permits is the same, so shouldn't there be a corresponding increase in plumbing permits? Won't, won't all the houses need plumbing?
Potentially, and let me just double-check a, uh, there. There's something kind of disconnected with those two. Currently, plumbing permits, yeah, we could do a 25%, not, not a 25% increase. Currently, we're almost at budget of $14,000. Building permits, remodels, things like that creates a bit of a disconnect. I, I just did an estimate from one year to another. I don't think it's going to be significant. Not the difference.
Chad, may I interject there?
Yes, please.
So, I believe I'm correct in this statement, that building permits are based on relatively a square footage basis, so the bigger the house, the more expensive the building permit is. Where a plumbing permit is based on the number of fixtures, which doesn't always correlate to bigger. It's, do you have more bathrooms? Do you have, you know, so yes, bathrooms add fixtures, but there's typically still only one kitchen and one laundry room and such, so there's, it is definitely not a direct correlation of plumbing permits going up at the same rate as.
You're enlightening. That is absolutely correct. So it's not based on a percentage, it's based on the number of fixtures. So even though we have some more building, the fixture prices is only maybe what, a couple of hundred, a couple of hundred dollars per fixture, no matter what size the house is. And that is the same with mechanical. Any other questions about resources, general fund?
I, I have a question about the transient room tax. The $380,000 that you have in the line, do you, is, do you have any occupancy numbers for that?
We have some basic occupancy numbers. Some of the troubles that we're having that the state of Oregon is working on is that some of the organizations are able to turn in their tax submissions without letting us know how many rooms, what rooms, and that sort of thing. But most of them do. I could say that probably the occupancy is up slightly, and probably the average daily rate also for those particular places. I'm being conservative, and the estimate that's coming in will probably exceed it a little bit next year, of what the budget is going to be, but I'm, I, I'm not making any more bets this year. I've lost everyone that I've ever placed within the last two years. So I'm not sure exactly where it is, but we should see an increase, just basic on the pent-up demand.
What, what does it cost to rent a house for a day?
Well, it depends on the house and the location is primarily the, the price driver, and then after that, the amount of bedrooms. So the, if you have a lot of bedrooms, there's some houses that can rent for $1,750. Some rent for $350. I don't have the back, the breakdown, but if it's closer towards the beach, you can add probably almost $100 every block that you go easily. And if it's somewhere that's, that's not so a great location, but it could lease it in Gearheart, it's probably a $300, $250 house.
Thank you.
That's, that's a guess there. From the old hotel days. What other questions do we have? Okay, and there's a page two on that. If you want to take a quick look. Just to let you know.
I'm still, I'm still shocked that the transient tax revenue has gone up so much during COVID. Where we estimated it would drop 50,000 last year. It went up.
Well, for, for what it's worth, Brett, Gearheart Golf Links had a record number of golfers this past year, and they anticipate breaking that record again, especially with the United States Hickory Golf Open coming up in September.
Amazing.
All right. So the taxes necessary to balance the budget is the very last line item in revenue. You see, we're looking at 584. We're going to bring in a little bit more than that, as a matter of fact. Currently, we're at 556. We've got one more tax payment. We'll probably be close to 584. So just doing a quick bit of math with an increase in property values and a little bit of an outlier for the amount of building that's going in, my best estimate is 607,000. Okay. So next, we have the administrative area. This is for people such as me, Justine, and Christie, and then the planning, the administrative work that goes through that. No really large changes in there. Health insurance, I do not see a very large, if any, increase happening from last year to this year. I've done some work, and it's maybe just a percent or two, but I think that our budget can actually absorb everything based on the numbers from last year. Legal fees, I did bring up a little bit this year, only because we've got some interesting things going on in regards to, you know, coal or some things we shouldn't run over, but I know the, the whole fire station issue. I could use a little bit of additional money, so I wanted to make sure we were fine there.
Chad, can I ask a question on personnel services?
Yes, please.
Um, I don't see the executive assistant wage on that. I see the administrative assistant, but I think Justine is that, isn't she?
Uh, no, Justine is the treasurer.
Uh-huh.
And Christie is the administrative assistant.
Okay, so it's, all right.
And we've allocated some of those jobs within different places also.
Oh, so this isn't the total there?
No, the totals are later in the budget under the salary spread that we have.
Yeah, okay.
Because, for example, part of Justine's wage is paid by the water fund because she does work for, yeah.
Okay.
All right. And then you have materials and services, city hall maintenance. You know, we've likely looking at some paints and some repair here in city hall maintenance, and some probably some basic refurbishing in the meeting room. There's not very many large increases. Any questions?
Why are we going to $8,000 on the election expense?
Depends on how the fire station falls and what we want to do with that. That's actually high. I'm sure that it wouldn't be above 5,000, but it could also cover some of the, the work that we have to do within the city administrative side for materials and services for that, but that's, that's mostly the fire station.
And is that because going not at a general election, but on a special election?
If it did go on a special election, then we'd be prepared for that. If it goes to a general election, it's not going to use much of that at all.
Okay.
Okay. So 416,458 this year on materials and services. The next is the building department, page five. You see those ones that I put in there? The revenue that we have coming in, materials, is $265,004. And those are the ways that we are going to spend it under materials and services. Again, building inspector is under materials and services because they're a contractor. And that does not mean that we will be paying all of that out. That is based on a percentage of what they make off of the permits, which is 75%. The rest of those funds, the 25%, go to pay things like state surcharge, plumbing inspectors, that sort of thing. Okay, any questions? All right, we can move to page six, police department. Very many huge issues at the top. Overtime pay is something that we've discussed with individuals within the council, for sure, and being a small department without very many employees over time is a officially, in my opinion, in a fiscally efficient way, to actually take care of the extra time needed by our police department for various reasons. We'll have some movements around. It sounds like Sergeant Vince Yokiyama may be retiring, and so that will probably increase over time a little bit, and so we can look at his replacement, and his retired date is just kind of open right at the moment, but I think it's soon. And questions about the personnel?
I, oh, I, I didn't have a question. So we it's showing plumbing inspector at $20,000 on line 10 on page five?
Yes, then $14,000 as far as revenue goes?
Yeah, it was $15,000 as the estimated revenue.
Yeah.
So we're operating at a loss.
I would recommend, thank you, Brett, that's actually a great find. I would recommend removing the 20, making that 15, and reserve $5,000 for another area in the budget that has come up recently. So Justine, if you can hear me okay, we'll go ahead and reduce that by 20, or by five. And then within the general fund, I'm going to make a recommendation later to reserve that $5,000. Okay. Thank you, Brett. That's a great find. That actually helps me.
Chad, can we put that 5,000 in the police department?
Exactly what I was thinking, yeah. Mayor, your idea about putting that in, I'll, I'll describe that as a matter of fact. Oh, that's why we don't see it here. I made an adjustment to my copy online and put a blank space under materials and services. And Mayor Plana, did you want to talk about the community care expense? The new line is called community care expense.
So theoretically, that would be something like line 29 or?
Uh, yeah, I think, yeah, that's about where I put it, somewhere near there.
So I would just say, in my conversations with Chief Bowman, uh, with regard to people who are houseless, passing through some transients, he has been purchasing hotel rooms on occasion. Uh, there may be other services that he can offer that will just help people. Uh, it's very momentary. It's only for a short period of time, usually one night. But it's just a way, I think, of us to start to wrap our arms around safety and health and well-being of people who happen to be in Gearheart and are needing assistance. And I think, I think giving Jeff a budget that he can work with on that will give us a good idea moving forward. We know this is a big project to kind of wrap our, our arms around and, and figure out what we can do and what we can't. We'll be working on it all year, and I think this would give him another tool. Just to help him do his job. So that's, yeah, I would love to see $5,000 to see how that works and how he's able to use it.
Sounds great.
Chad? Do you want to continue? After you unmute, after you unmute?
Said some really I don't know. It was brilliant. Okay, so after that, we're looking at the fire department expenses, I'm on page eight. No major changes, the fire, the fire chief was anticipated based on the bill remaining for a little bit and to give us some flexibility for hiring in the future. We did advertise between 75 and 85, there is a little bit of flexibility there. Any other questions about?
Can you, can you tell us what line 11 is all about?
Oh, all right, so that conflagration labor would be about half of what we would take in. I have $80,000 coming into the revenue side for conflagration. So if the governor or another declares a conflagration or allows firefighters from Oregon to go into California and things again, that labor line will be used to pay the firefighters that go to these fires. We will be reimbursed for everything that we pay out to those firefighters, including all state funds, federal funds, medical, if it applies, and a small administration fee.
Okay.
So the 80,000 then is half for the vehicles and half for the crew?
Yeah, approximately. All right, any other questions about fire? On the page 10, non-departmental. Non-departmental is in the general fund, it's a few things that are kind of a little bit different outliers within the city, you heard of things that we do. And it's also the, the vehicle that we use to transfer money out of the general fund and into reserve funds. If you see the part of the $80,000 that we brought in is a, or the other part, let's see here, 60, so 30,000 of that increase from the apparatus equipment reserve fund. Last year, we budgeted 30, this year, we're budgeting 60, so that will take care of an additional 30% of that income coming from conflagrations. And the other $10,000 was really kind of thrown in within the fire budget here and there.
So Chad, on the building reserve fund, that includes the 90,000 from the American Rescue Plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Normally, we just put in $10,000 to the building reserve fund, $90,000, but then go into that reserve fund. And just so that you know, the reserve fund has to have a city council approval before the city can spend it. We have to spend it as per the ordinance that you said to set those funds up. So police car reserve, a little bit extra, fire apparatus equipment, equipment and reserve fund. Mitigation fund, you know, kind of places within the budget. So those are just kind of coming, there has mitigation funds coming, some of the increases, because we did not use the 330,000 for that. Any questions? I have a calculation somewhere where I can show where the amount of reserves that we have for the city or anticipating court fund. There's not a lot of change in the court at all, we have not been getting busier, in fact, been a little bit slower, but we'll see what next week, or next year brings. Again, that's a place where the court clerk is also the zone code administrative assistant, so part of her wages there. Part of her wages in court, and that's that's how that works. Planning. Some changes in planning, trying to better allocating hers. We have the planning consultants, Carol is not an employee with us, she is a consultant, but she bills us an hourly rate. So I increased the planning consult materials and services because I think with other things that we're working on, and the more time that she's spending with Gearheart as we are getting busier and planning issues, as you've seen, and the, you know, the potential fire station. I increased that area along with the expenses. Same with land needs attorneys again.
What does that equal, is that like one day a week or two days a week approximately? Does she bill by the hour, by the project, or what?
By the hour, and she has been $75 an hour for many years with us. And she's increasing her consult rates to $100 an hour, which in relation to other planners and things around is still very inexpensive, especially as consultant. Right. No other questions, we can move to general fund parts. Interesting things in here, just because for balancing reasons, $49,000 out of the the 330 was added into here, and you'll see that in a few various places. Increased equipment quite a bit. We increased maintenance, repair quite a bit. We can use the funds for equipment on equipment and the maintenance repair for maybe some of the landscaping and things that we need to do to accommodate.
So are you planning on subbing out the bathroom cleaning, is that why it's gone up $3,500? Or are you just putting money there for that reason?
Restroom maintenance, 35,000, the costs are increasing for us. We have been cleaning the bathrooms more often due to COVID. And so it looks like right now, we probably overspent our line item a little bit from last year, although the, the whole category will take care of it. But now we anticipate up to 5,000, hopefully we won't hit that.
But are you using a subcontractor?
We are.
Is that why it's going up?
Uh, we've been doing that for the last year and this year, I anticipate, yeah, I suppose that would be, it's not going up. I think dollar for dollar, it's actually a savings for the city, taking our public works guys out of cleaning restrooms and leaving them to take care of other parts of Gearheart. Generally, contractors can save a lot of money for a city over public employees. So that's why we try to use them where we can. But going up because of COVID.
The, the parks feedback is asking about bathroom services, particularly at Trails Head, like, I mean, I think of the 10th Street access, which obviously we're not going to probably put a flushable toilet in there, but it's possible in the summertime or something that we maybe ought to have another porta potty like we had downtown for so many years. I don't know if that's something that the council would consider, but it certainly is an ask from people because people relieve themselves in the dunes all the time. And that seems like that would be where that light item might be increased.
Hey Chad.
We could probably use parks maintenance and repair.
Hey, Chad, I apologize, if you could go back to the planning consultant. Is that an A and E personal services contract that has contract line numbers that specify you do X, I pay Y? You do Z.
You're talking about the planning consultant?
Yeah.
No, it's not based on individual projects. We kind of do it by last year amounts that we paid, talk about whether or not we're going to increase or decrease the amount of work. Year over year has been busier, but no, we just play it flat hourly, right? Because I have had also, you know, when there's things that come to me that are very time consuming, I have also been giving her time to do those sorts of things. But all of the planning consulting fees really go through me, the city administrator. People generally aren't just able to call her very often. So no, it's, it's just an approximate amount that we would spend for the year based on, right, that's the short version.
Okay. I've just drawn up past experience working for the Corps of Engineers. If we had a consultant, our method of business was make a big list of all the tasks you would expect to be done in a given year, and then assign an expected cost to complete those tasks. But if the tasks aren't easily definable, I understand.
You know, I think to somewhat we could do that, but they are also not easily definable because you sometimes never know what the planning commissioner or the city council is going to bring up.
Right, okay. But maybe food for thought that if you've got repetitious things, you specify a contract line number for a specific cost to do that.
Yeah, I was just thinking what a repetition would be, I think that the only thing we could call is the amount of hours she spends at a meeting once a month after that.
Well, well, that, that's, that's attend meetings.
Yeah.
There could be a cheaper hourly rate for that than a professional service of consulting.
Meetings can get quite spicy.
Anyhow, thinking out loud.
And following on, on that train of thought. Do we supply office space or materials for her? What's the level of direction, there's, there's a IRS form, a check sheet that you can typically, typically go through to determine whether you really have an independent contractor versus a part-time employee? I don't know if we've gone through that process before or not, but I just throw that up.
The nice thing about Carol is she does work for other cities and
Okay, good.
And all the other fees that are in there.
That's one of the questions on the checklist is do they work for other entities in similar capacity? So that helps, so.
And you're saying she does work for other cities?
Yes, she does.
Then their budget that she gets paid would be available.
I'm sorry, I cut you off there, Chris, what was that?
The budget that they allocate for her services would be available to us to review.
For the other cities, no. The other cities are favored.
Oh, it's not a matter of public record?
Well, I'm sure you can go to those other cities and see what it is that she does for them, sure.
Okay.
All right, and then after that, we have the summary.
What page are you on now?
I'm actually on 14 and 15. Which is summarizes everything we just talked about, which balances with our resources.
And so this budget does not include any additional personnel, is that right?
No. No, there is no, I am not advocating this year for any new personnel to city gear. All right, so page 16, we have debt service fund. This is the cash that we use to pay our bonds based on tax appropriation that we receive. So taxes necessary to balance, 827,412 this year. Every year, more of that is going to principal and interest, a little bit more and more. We have the requirements, the two different bonds we have, and the first area is the budgeted payment dates, the 15 and 11. And then principal and interest. The budgeted payment day is so yes, so the payments that we are doing, 312022, will be those amounts. The entrance payments will take care of two places within the calendar, equal that. And then the remaining at the bottom is to make our early payment the next year, would help. Any questions?
What about the refi?
This does not reflect the refi at this time. It doesn't, you know, the numbers are still too vague at this moment, and I asked about that, and it was best to go ahead and budget for this for now. And then the next year, those budgeted amounts that were not spent, if we do a refine, then we'll go into the year after. So it will wash out, and it will be a savings for the taxpayers that we anticipate in the 2022, 23 budget.
I just want to make a general comment that for me, this would be so much more helpful if I had our current expenses, I understand we're going by the budget, but it would be so helpful to know what our actuals were when we're reviewing this. Maybe that's just my layperson's way of thinking, but.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that. Your last week, or excuse me, Wednesday, we received the revenue and expenses, excuse me, through there, and that does have the category for what we've actually spent, exactly. But I should make a, I know what, we can either conclude it in this or make a point that, I think we should do both, actually, and make a point to kind of track those. And compare them.
That would be helpful.
Okay. Justin and I will make a note about that. Okay. Special fund, this is the water improvement construction fund.
And also with, with, with the reduction in interest rate and bond payment, our budget just show, just would show a positive variance that we're spending less than we had anticipated. So it will still be able to track that it's a benefit to refinance.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. All right, page 17, Water Improvement Construction Fund. These are construction funds that are still left over from the bonds that we had taken out to build the water treatment facility. We've been using these funds for specific construction things within the water treatment facility, which is allowed by law. And we are down to $3,981 for some sort of capital outlay, if we choose. This is its own fund. If there's no questions, we move to page 18. All right, so we have the water fund. All right, so we have the water fund, completely different fund. It's another business, if you will, within the city of Gearheart. And it runs like the general fund, although it's for water. So my anticipations for revenues are at top, the cash carry forward. In addition into the from the American Rescue Plan of seventy-five thousand dollars. And you'll see where that expense is here in a little bit. So those are the resources. There is the summary of the requirements or the expenses. Which is laid out in page nineteen. Twenty. And twenty-one. All right, so not a lot of major changes in that. I'm. Antiability workers, just as we're tracking a little bit more, I've increased. Those amounts towards water, primarily the job that they do here in town.
Hey, hey Chad, sorry for interrupting. But I just had a thought maybe for the parking lot. For me, it may be for others, it would be helpful. Maybe if there was another column on this spreadsheet that had change. Between last year. This year, as in a plus or a minus. And the number that the change represents.
Yes, I like that a lot.
Then that had a lot to do with my question on the planning person. That was thirty-five and it went up to eighty or ninety, I think. I don't know, maybe seventy, so that that kind of had a lot to do with that.
Okay, well, that makes sense. And I forgot to note at the beginning of this conversation, this is probably the last time that you're going to see this version of the budget. And because what Justine has been working on along with an accountant that's helping us. And our. Auditors, we're going to be creating some categories. That will bring a lot of the different expenses into one area rather than multiples. So it's better able to kind of track what the increases overall. And the way that we put our budgets together and the way that QuickBooks will be reporting it. With some of the changes that I've heard Justine talk about will be very beneficial to us. And parts of this, you know, it'll start looking more like accrual accounting also. For parts, we'll still be cash basis, but accrual accounting will kind of start working its way into this. Okay. Any other questions about water funds?
Yes, Chad, I have a question is why are water? Chemical water analysis on line twenty-seven goes up sixty thousand dollars?
Okay, here, let me grab this. I had that in my head. Let me go grab my note here. Okay, so the reason that the chemi.
I'm sorry, Carrie, Carrie, which which line item?
It's twenty-seven.
Did you mention?
Twenty-seven on page nineteen.
Got it.
So one of the areas we could use in the past was a. Monitoring of the water treatment facility through the construction fund. Now that that fund has been depleted, the chemical water analysis to sixty-five thousand dollars. Most of that, what that'll turn out to be is the study that we do every year. To take a look at all of the water that we brought in, made the treatment. The calculations and the reporting on the aquifer and its performance. And on Neocoxi, pointing the Neocoxi Creek. It's an organization that so far we've been using, it's called Sound Earth. And year over year, they've been collecting data and making reports that are very important to us to the Water Resources Division. There's another thing that they do is called claim of beneficial use. So they do all the calculations to make sure the water that we are receiving and we are using. So that way we keep our water. Water rights also. So don't use it much as your water rights are, what they do is they shrink your rights down. That's happened to Warrenton a little bit, especially after they lost Pacific Seafood. And some others, they lost a little bit of their water rights. They're working on gaining some of those back. But that's what the chemical water analysis line item is.
Because you've taken it out of the other fund?
Yeah, other construction fund. Yeah, because the construction fund does not have the money to support this anymore, so it now goes into the water fund. Okay, water building maintenance, we're looking at some painting there again, some upkeep. Any other questions?
Have we seriously not replaced all of the water meters?
No, we're still, I don't know the exact number, but we're close. I think we're getting close to. Seventy-five percent, seventy, somewhere in there.
Where have they not been done?
I can't tell you that at the moment. Has really tried to work on getting entire neighborhoods done, but I don't know exactly where it's left yet. Seen it, but I don't recall.
So that wasn't a personal services contract? Or was?
We have used contractors to put in some of our meters. But if you look. See here. Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that would be some personal contract, you know, at the cost of the meters. We also have, you know, I can't tell you the amount of money, but we do have. A storage of water meters that are ready to be put in. So we're buying fewer water meters as time goes by. And then when the installed contractor is available, we try to pick them up, but it's very difficult based on weather. Also increased part of the monies that with the. Water reserve and road district funds. Excuse me, the water reserve from the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars is increasing a transfer to the water reserve fund. Of an additional fifty thousand dollars. That we want to do large projects, we'll have to go to the city council fund.
Chad, it looks like our our water water purchases are taking a significant jump up in the budget. Can you?
Yeah, which is. That's. That's true, and which also increases our revenue a little bit. Because we are reselling that water that we purchased, you know, at a slight profit. Because the amount they're costing, but. We've seen, I think, last month. Make sure I'm right, or within the last thirty days, a couple of days ago. We'd made five million more gallons than we had the same time last year. Part of it is dry, watering lawns, but the other part of it is we have quite a few more people living here. They're occupied, they're otherwise vacation homes. So that's part of the increase that we'd like to make.
So our our own wells can't support that. Level of water?
No, there's a couple of things going on with that. Our wells, the resources division has basically said they will not allow us to have any more water rights. For the state of Gearheart, so as we grow, we spend a little bit more money with Warrenton. But what's also happening, Warrenton is also coming closer to running out of their water rights with all of the growth that they've seen. So there is going to have to be an effort with the two of us to work on Water Resources Division together to look at future increases. That will also. Go ahead.
Oh, I I. Remember if I dreamed this or not, but I think I read fairly recently that Warrenton's. One of their sources of water was the Lewis and Clark River and there was recent contamination in it, which. Curtailed their ability to get water. So will that? That impact us at some point if we're dependent upon them?
Yes, it would. Yeah, we have a direct line from the water treatment facility. So I think that if I remember correctly, I don't know exactly, Mark talked to me about it, but I think that was kind of a unique situation. And then they had to shut the reservoir on from the river, but they were still. We got the issue taken care of somehow, and then we're able to go back into full. Production, but I can't recall what that was. And say that Mark was not worried, and he worries a lot. All right. So moving to page twenty-one, state revenue sharing. We have a beginning fund balance that we did not spend, an incoming of twenty thousand, so that leaves us thirty-five thousand three hundred. And we have a request for forty-seven thousand six hundred. So I believe in the past, please remind me folks that we had actually used this time to have discussions of both the allocation of those funds. You've heard a request from four or five people. The Seaside Airport Committee, the member was Diane Widdow, she called me a couple of days ago, said she could not be here tonight. And she'd hope that I would mention that she intended to and remind you that the five hundred dollars, what they're going to use is to buy some bicycles. For pilots to. Ride bicycles once they land into town or elsewhere. And when I asked her what the benefit was, what they put in there was that people would visit Gearheart. No opinion here. All right, so how would you like to?
Are you asking for opinions as to whether? The five hundred dollars is reasonable or justified?
Not for you. I don't have any information and I got those. You know, that opinion. I can't really answer anything more about that, Brent, sorry. So. Carrie, if you'd like, we can work through this. We can talk about as you being the chair about the allocations that were requested. Justine is going to keep an eye on the amounts that you have allocated throughout there and any changes. And so you can start making some changes to this page as to how you'd like to allocate the grants, and then Justine will continue to report as we go.
Well, I do not have the original. With my document.
Okay.
We can take.
I have the suggested by you, Chad, but I do not have the original where they're. What is it? One, two, three, four? The five asks that were different.
Is it possible we can take a five-minute recess or break?
We are almost two hours in.
Does anyone have an objection to a five-minute break?
Nope, not at all.
Okay, then it's. Someone tell me the time.
It would be fifty-five.
So back at six fifty-five?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the rest of this should go a little quicker one, ready?
All right, I found my paper as far as. Original calls for money. It was with all their background information. We've got. Dan, you're on.
Not yet, but he might be a little
I'm here. Okay. Chris, are you back?
I am, thank you.
Okay, Bob, are you in? Bob? Okay, well, I hope Bob joins us here shortly, but I'm going to continue on without him because it's been two hours and I'm getting tired.
Hey Kerry, before we start, I'd just like to offer thanks for the grant requests specifying how the money was to be used in Gearheart. I think that's been very helpful for me this year in better understanding grant money and its uses.
Great, I'm glad to hear that, Chris. So instead of going through the, the list that shows the $47,000 of want, I'd like to stay with page 22 and just go down from the top where it says audit and just get your feelings on what you feel is going to be appropriate for each and every one, and we can go down by a line number or by name, whatever your whatever easiest for Justine.
Well, at this point, I'm gonna not have, I can't comment just because I'm biased, so if I'm quiet, it's because I have ethics.
Okay, you're recusing yourself on certain points?
On all of them. I mean, I don't feel that it would be safe for me to unless, I just don't think it would be ethical.
Okay.
I just, you know, if I say, yeah, I would just rather be real ethical and not comment on any of them.
Alright.
Hey Kerry, what it's worth, I'll just offer my thoughts by exception. With respect to all the grant requests, I have no issues with any of them with the exception of the Harbor and Helping Hands. Those are the only two that I have concerns about. The rest I have no concerns about.
Okay, and what are your concerns?
My concerns?
Yes.
Okay, so for the Harbor, because we have a tight budget with respect to the overall totals, I think the request for $500 purely for operating expenses could be a place where we could pare off their $5,000 request and perhaps even the 1,500. I don't have an issue with their request of 3,000. With respect to Helping Hands, I have issue with the entire amount, as I did last year.
Okay, Chris, which sheet are you looking at?
Okay, so that would be the grant donation request form, Helping Hands reentry outreach centers. If the amount of donation request is 10,000, it's page 32.
That was in the spreadsheet that Christie provided with the actual request.
Yes.
Okay, aren't we looking at page 22 of the budget now?
We are looking at that, which has the old request that I just came up with the epitome and how to make this work better next time, but the page 22
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Request is 10K, so page 22 is not applicable for me.
Okay.
So you, in other words, you don't want to give any money to the Helping Hands and to the Harbor, right? Is that what you're saying, Chris?
My recommendation is nothing for Helping Hands and 3,500 potentially for the Harbor. All the others I support as a volunteer budget committee member.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's by exception.
And that looks like it would make the math work, doesn't it?
Well, I personally think Helping Hands is an important part of our community. And actually, it's more so in my opinion than funding like Sunset Empire Park and Rec. And even to a certain extent, the food banks, I think trying to get people back on their feet that are struggling with addiction issues is very important to our community.
I do too. I don't know about the $10,000 and $5,000 amounts that were requested. In fact, I was when he suggests we lower both of them to 3,000, which is more in keeping with what we did last year.
Okay, so how about, since we're in the middle of the list, basically, we start at the top and then we work our way down and we go by each one and we agree to something and then move to the next line item. That way we don't cause me to lose track of where you're talking because it's going from one point to another. Is that alright with everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so the audit, why are we giving $300 to the audit? Who's the audit?
That was just a portion of the fee that the auditors charged the city as a whole. I allocated some audit dollars to every location.
Okay. Alright, so I don't have a problem with it. Does anyone else have a problem with that allocation?
Yeah, I would prefer it went to one of the food banks.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think audit fees ought to be in administrative costs and not allocated out to the money that we're earmarking for grants.
Yeah, in the history on this, Brent, you probably know this, is there was about half and half. Half of the money that came in from the state was used for administrative, all sorts of different things, and the general fund half of it was used for grants, and over the years, we've been piecing that out, so that's just probably a carryover. And potentially to help Kerry or Counselor Smith with this organization, should we just go down the grant donation request form that Christie had provided?
I, yeah, I can.
And then next year, what Justine and I will work on is taking everything out of the budget on state revenue sharing and only putting in what the requests were, then we can work on that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Alright, if you guys want to do it that way, then we'll change everything and go to Christie's report, and the first one on it is CERT. And that's for $1,100. Input, please.
Sounds good to me.
I don't know. To me, I think that should just be a line on him, it should just be melded in with the fire department.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, I don't see a specific grant request form for it either.
There hasn't been in the past. CERT has been funded through, again, the state revenue sharing, because it was kind of a newer organization. Last year, what we did is we held $3,000 aside for CERT, and then over the year, they spend it for different projects, sutures, medical gear, that sort of thing. They did overspend it this year. They are not doing a actual request, that's just where we funded that from. Point is, Mayor Cochran's idea is to take it out of there completely and put it in the fire department section of the budget, and then we'll just have to figure out where we're going to remove $3,000.
I agree.
It's
3,000, it's 1,100, Chad.
I'm not sure where that number came from, and actually, yeah, I don't know where Christie came up with that action.
So you've got 3,000 on your list?
We have traditionally allocated $3,000 to them.
But, but we're really using it for hazard mitigation. We are buying cash supplies for the city. I mean, it's not really for the CERT, it's hazard mitigation supplies.
Correct.
Okay, well, then we'll just take it out for now? Is that acceptable to everybody since it's any issues?
Yes. Sounds like American Rescue Act stuff.
Dan? Okay, it's removed.
Sorry, I shouldn't, as a CERT person, I don't think I should be commenting on that.
Okay. Alright, the next one down is Trails and Art Association. Their ask is for $5,000. Input, please.
Last year it was 1,000.
Well, it is true, it is truly a Gearheart
Yes.
program. So I'm in favor.
You can't get any more Gearheart than that.
Can we at least do half of what they're requesting?
I had penciled in $2,500 as the amounts for kind of budget constraint here.
They're trying to, they're trying to fund a, they're trying to fund a project that's going to keep the building going. If it needs a new roof, likely that means that it's, they're potentially getting water infiltration, and so it will cost more to do the project or repair if it doesn't get solved sooner than later. And doing half a roof doesn't make a lot of sense.
I mean, seeing as we might have dollar difference disagreements, perhaps if we just say, yes, worth funding first, and then we go down and see what all the yes, worth funding firsts equal, and then pare down from there as needed. Does that make sense? I'm seeing confused.
Well, then are you going a yes, worth funding at that ask? Or is it yes, worth funding at this is what I think, because I'm trying to live within a budget?
No, I'm, I'm saying it's yes, worth funding at the ask. And then after we get that total dollar figure for, after reviewing all the grants, we see what money it totals versus what the budget is, then we pare down.
I see.
Does that make sense?
Well, it's a different way of doing it, it's a I haven't heard anyone else, Chris, though, express a dislike for any other business or grant request except for yours and Helping Hands. And so to me, it sounds as though everyone's willing to spend something on each ask, so we might as well try and get the money situated as we go down the list, and maybe we should just hold them off to the very end and see if we have any extra money and go from there.
Good idea.
Okay, so we'll just table them and move on. Just to make things flow a little easier. So the next one is the Little Yellow House. Their ask is 2,000. Is there any input as far as the rest of you are concerned?
It's a good organization.
Which line are they on, on 22?
On 22?
13.
Seaside Hall.
13, got it.
Sorry, I was looking on the other sheet.
So they got 1,500 last year, 2,000 seems reasonable, it's a good organization.
I'm just personally surprised that the Methodist Church isn't paying the O and M cost for handicap parking. That's all.
Well, I don't know what to say to that. It's, you would think something would be done.
Own the property.
They do. So are we saying $2,000? Is that what the general consensus is, or is there any other input?
I'll offer 500.
Thank you, Chris.
But that's just me.
Alright, we've got one for 500 and we've got three for 2,000. Are we going to leave it at 2,000? I'm not an auctioneer, I'm not trying to bid this off or anything, I just
I, I would prefer to go with what Chad has recommended.
1,500?
Yes.
Dan, do you have anything you want to say to that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Brent, would you be good with 1,500?
Sure.
Sure. Okay, Bob, do you agree with that kind of number?
Sure.
Alright. 1,500 for the Little Yellow House. Next on the list is the Mechanicum Watershed Council for 1,000. Any input, please?
I feel like I have a con on that one.
Okay, my line is going to lose itself.
I think we should fund that at $1,000.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
So it's $1,000 for the Mechanicum? Alright. The CCA Regional Food Bank is asking for five.
I agree.
I disagree. Why? Um, they, they admit that they have good cash on hand. And I personally, in having to make choices, I, that would not be my first choice out of cutting, say, Helping Hands or or the Women's Resource Center. Top of any of those types of organizations.
Would you be comfortable with a lower number?
Oh, I'm okay with a lower number. I just don't think funding it at 5,000 makes sense when we're trying to cut money overall.
Does anyone have a is, is anyone opposed to what's on the page 22 at $3,000?
3,000, sounds good.
I would just offer, I'm not opposed to 3,000, but the RFB is located in Gearheart and serves the Gearheart community. the RFB is located in Gearheart and serves the Gearheart community. If, if our intent is to maximize the use of grant money in service to the citizens of Gearheart, then I see every reason to fully fund their request.
For St. Vincent?
Pardon me, I didn't understand that.
That's Clatsop County, right? Community Action? That's the one we're talking about, right?
Like, I, I've got CCA and I'm not understanding what it means, uh, but a regional food bank means it serves all of Clatsop County.
But it's located here in Gearheart.
No.
It says that in how the funds will specifically be used in Gearheart, it says the Regional Food Bank is located in Gearheart.
Not true.
Really?
It's, it's up there by Costco.
Oh, okay. Well, I stand corrected. I'm just reading what I saw.
So would you? Would you stand for three?
I'd stand for two and a half.
Okay, do I have a a consensus on, um, three or two and a half? I mean, it's give me some input.
Two and a half.
Let's, let's, well, let's leave it at three and see where we fall out on the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we'll leave it at three and see where we fall. The next one is Casa and it's $3,000 ask.
I believe that's important.
Me too.
Yep.
So everyone's happy with three? And please excuse me if I, I go to three and two and a half and things like that instead of $2,500, it's just, that's the way it works for me. Helping Hands is an ask of 10,000.
Weren't we going to table this one to the end?
Is, no, that was, uh, the, um, Trails and Art Association, 5,000 asked for a new roof.
Oh.
So this one is 10,000 for Helping Hands. It's been suggested that it go to $3,000 according to the budget. Proposed budget. We can table it until the end and see what we have as far as everything else, but right now we're almost running dollar for dollar is what it's been proposed. Is that all right? Do we table it?
Sounds good.
I'm good with that. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, Brent, do you want to table it until the end and we see where our money is?
Uh, sure, we can do that. I, I just think they're, they're considerably more than any other ask, so, uh, I think it needs to be lowered, but okay, we can, we can do that later.
Yeah, and I, I just want to clarify, I'm not against what they do. It's just their overhead costs are incredible. And the fact that they don't specifically serve Gearheart doesn't fit my matrix for how I try to support grants. That's all.
No, it's a good point, Chris, and, uh, we'll table it until the end if that's all right with you, Paulina.
Yes, absolutely.
Bob, are you on board?
Yes.
Okay, we'll table it. The next one is St. Vincent de Paul asking for three.
Fund it.
Sounds good.
I like it.
Yep.
Okay. Other input? Next one is the Harbor for 5,000 is their ask.
I feel this is very important.
I, Dan, do you think it needs to be higher than the 3,000 that Dad put in?
Um, I think it's an extremely important program and, um, yeah, so I, I, I'm okay with funding it at the full 5,000.
I thought Regional Food Bank?
I'm sorry, I didn't
The Harbor, the Harbor is the Women's Resource Center for, for battered women.
I, I think the 3,500 of their three line items is a good start.
And Chris, what do you mean by 3,500 of their three line items?
Well, there's three line items, 3,500, 1,000 and 500, right? They said how they were going to spend the money.
Oh, you're talking about, uh, the way they broke down their $10,000.
No, they're 5,000.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong finger.
Yeah, remember, they didn't give us an income and expense spreadsheet, so we don't know actual overhead costs, but I mean, just my view, I thought that 3,500 was a good start. And then if more money is available, maybe fund the next one, but I, I would draw a line in the sand on giving them that 500 to pay for overhead operating expenses. That's all. I'd just like to see grant money used like feet on the ground.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your position previously with those numbers.
So the fact that somebody's being on, the fact that somebody's being honest about how they actually have to budget and have actual overhead costs versus somebody that just says they're going to fund now, we're going to, we're going to use other monies to fund the overhead costs. We're going to use your money for X, Y, or Z. I, I don't see the difference.
Yeah, it, it is a bit of a shell game and everybody has overhead. So okay, you know, from, from an accounting standpoint, dollars are fungible. You can use them wherever. We're, we're not restricting the money for a specific use, so they can spend it any way they want. So let's just figure out how much we're going to give them. That's so
Right.
And I, I think 3,000 for the sake of consistency and the sake of balancing the budget. They're, they're all good organizations. They all do good work. Give, giving most of them $3,000 shows that we're not playing favorites over any one organization over another. So I, I'd say 3,000 bucks.
Okay.
Paulina?
It's fine.
Okay, well, if we have some extra somewhere, we can always revisit it and change that number upwards. Seaside Municipal Airport Advisory Committee, $500. Is everyone agreeable to that?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. Yes.
Dan?
I was the first one to say I was good with it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. The next one I've got is North Coast Food Bank. A $4,000 ask.
I'm good.
That's the Food Web.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. I said Food Bank. I, excuse me. North Coast Food Web. $4,000.
And again, I, I like 3,000 for sake of consistency.
Yes. I agree.
Was that a yes, Paulina?
I agree with Brent. Stick to the 3,000. It's consistent with many of the other uh, disbursements that we're doing.
Dan? Hello, Dan?
Oh, sorry, mute. Um, yeah, I, I'd rather allocate some of that money elsewhere, but, but I can go along with it.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I'm, I'm up board with this.
Okay, Bob?
I agree with Brent.
Okay, the next one up is Sunset Empire Park and Rec District, and they're asking for three.
That's a taxing district seeking donations. I have heart
And we've got people in need and the food for food banks and we in this time of need, I think we need to maybe cut cut those kinds of things, not get rid of them, but just cut them and, um, move that money into other areas where people in need. So I'm just one person, so I will go with the majority. I don't, uh, feel really strongly, but I feel strong enough to say something.
I'm lost what we're talking about right now. Sorry.
Sunset Empire Park and Rec District. It's a scholar, it's I believe it's scholarships to send kids to their, uh,
Yes, it's page 49 of the big package that we got sent by Christie.
Okay. We can do $500.
Okay.
Yeah, on, on page 22, line 16 says Seaside Scholarships, and then on line 20, it says Seaside Park and Rec Scholarships. Are those the same or are they different?
I believe they're different because it says Park and Rec and Seaside Scholarships are totally different. And High school, okay. So we are talking about the Park and Rec District. Asked for $3,000. Is that a number you want to change?
Yes, please.
Okay, give me a number.
500 is what we've been funding in the past.
Does anyone have any problem with changing it to 500?
I agree with Dan.
500 is fine.
Bob?
I agree with Dan.
Chris?
Well, I don't agree, only because it gets back to the point that I've probably boringly keep bringing up, but this one clearly helps residents of Gearheart. And when he was asked, he specifically answered that it helps residents of Gearheart. So if, if grant money, you know, I'll be redundant, but I think the grant money, the first and foremost is how does it benefit the citizens of Gearheart? So I, I would be in favor of far more than $500.
Okay.
My argument is they are a taxing district.
What does that mean?
That means that they collect, they collect property taxes from within their district, the people that are within their district to fund their programs. So to me, then, always having your hand out, which they do seemingly always, I have heartburn with. That'd be like us going down the street and constantly asking for donations from our citizens for something that we haven't budgeted.
Are, are we in their taxing district?
No.
We are not, we are not.
So that we're getting benefit without being taxed?
Only to the point of the money goes into a pool and then the people are chosen from that whatever list they give the, um, there must be a lottery or a, a pool that they just drawn names out of a hat of people in need. So the chances of a Gearheart resident getting benefit may be there, but it may be slim. And I would happen to agree with everybody else and say $500.
Okay.
Maybe we could just have it restricted to, uh, children's services because he mentioned swimming lessons. He mentioned the after-school program and he did say that we, I, I remember the number nine. I don't know, it was
Yes.
or something. But
It was it was nine families.
Nine families.
Because we are paying a higher rate because we are out of district if you do use the facilities for everything.
Okay, well, the, we, we're trying to get the money situation. So $500 is good for everyone but you, Chris, right?
Well, I'd like to see more, but, uh, you know, I'm flexible.
Okay, I'm just trying to bring us to
Sure.
the total amount of money where we've allocated and what we need to allocate.
Sure.
Or should allocate. So we'll go on and the next one is South County Food Bank at a $5,000 ask. Any input, please?
I'd again go to 3,000.
Okay.
Unless we have leftovers, then I would raise it.
Okay.
I agree.
Currently by my calculations, uh, we are so far up to 18,500 and what you've chosen so far, these are 16,800 left over. If you were to spend all of the resources and not have any move forward into the next year.
Well
we got it up on the screen also if you can see it.
So right now, um, we still have Seaside Scholarships. And I got to cross-reference, this is going to take me a minute. Uh, Celebration and Materials Services. We got Materials and Services on page 22. These are items that have not been funded by us. Oh. So that's what I, I've got so far. If anyone else comes up with something, please let me know.
Yeah, Materials and Services in the past for 5,000, I reduced it to two. We can reduce it to zero if you prefer.
Which line item are you, we just started to stop at the top and go through what the currents are. Start with line one.
It's in regards to what you chose already.
Yeah.
So I've got it up on the screen here if you want to see it. And I'm going to highlight the line that, that area that it's in.
Okay.
And down here in the green, I'm going to circle it with my cursor if you can see it. On the green on the lower right is the amount left over. If we were to spend all of the incoming or the On the green on the lower right is the amount left over. If we were to spend all of the incoming or the money, we have incoming plus the reserves.
So what do we have for Trails End? It's really hard to read that.
Yeah, it's pretty small, Chad.
You don't have anything in there for Trails End.
Correct, because you folks tabled that so far.
Okay, well, we should be I don't want to tell you what to do, but we should be filling those in now.
Well, we're trying. We were going to start at the top, and if we're going to go this way, that's fine. It's a I'm sorry, I'm going to have to lean into the screen and look at this.
There's
Trail End. Trail End Arts.
There's three you haven't made a decision on. You tabled the Trails End, you've tabled the Helping Hands, and you haven't made a decision about South County Food. Those are ones that actually submitted a request.
Okay. All right, Trails End Art Association. We have $16,000 if we spend all of it. They're asking for five. Input?
Let's put in 2,500.
I would like to fund it in full.
Me too. I mean, you can't half build a roof.
Brent, do you have any input?
Well, they make good points, but there's got to be other sources that they can go to. I how about how about 3,000?
Guys, this is for Gearheart specifically.
Oh, let's find it.
Okay.
Why are we?
Okay, Bob?
Um, well, I'm a retired roofer and a contractor, and Dan knows the price is going to materials is going to be up by the time they get around to it. So I recommend it in full.
All right, then we're going to give them $5,000. Recommend that the council gives them $5,000. Next one is Helping Hands. That's a $10,000 ask.
Just to let you know, we have an income of $20,000 a year. We have savings in there. Next year, we'll probably only get about $20,000 per year. We're currently at 23,500. We still have 11,800 to spend.
Okay.
In the three remaining spots, could we just put 3,000 for to see what that gives us?
Placeholder.
Yep.
And which spots are those?
If that's what you want to do, is there any objections to $3,000?
South County Food at 3,000.
Food.
Okay, we got it that. 29,500.
Uh on Cedar, did we get an application from them? Uh
We did receive one, but it was
I didn't see it in the packet.
It was late. Yes. It was late.
They have Brent, they have never bothered to give us their financials. And several years ago, Rita requested that we get financials from our our grant requests. So we know that they're spending their money on something viable and not just on overhead. And so because they never bothered to give their financials, we decided we weren't giving money to Cedar until we got that. Now, whether that happens this year or not, but that is typically what we've done for the last couple of years.
Okay, and so Chad, we got in a late application. Did that contain financials?
Uh, I'm not sure to tell you the truth. Let me double check. It'll take me a moment if you guys want to carry on.
Okay, sure. No, no problem. All right, so Justine, you said there was one other item that we tabled, and I've only got two on my list.
I think you're good. You had tabled the Trails End Arts, and you made a decision. You had tabled the regional. Well, you hadn't made a decision about South County Food Bank, and you did. And you had tabled one other one.
It was Helping Hands.
Yes, Helping Hands.
Your Seaside High School Scholarships.
They didn't actually submit an application. It doesn't look like this year. So any you you have funded all of the ones that were on the sheet with the request except Cedar.
And the South County Food, we did discuss potentially increasing it if there was more money available, if memory serves.
It does serve you correct. And Justine, what's our balance that we have left available?
Again, it
We lost our spreadsheet.
It depends if you want to deplete all of your resources.
Well, what's our resources that we can deplete and then will not deplete them?
So revenue stream is about 20,000 a year. So anything over 20,000 is eating into your reserves, which has been declining every year. So you're starting to use up more of your reserves at 90, you know, 9,500 over.
Oh, yeah. Just to clarify, we only bring in 20,000 a year. So we're kind of using some of our savings.
Right. Okay, we're we're already over.
Correct. And what that will do is leave us with 58 addition to our $20,000 for next year.
Okay, and then next year, we will not have a request of 5K by Trails End.
Well, I would hope not.
Well, might.
Yeah, I try to think positive here, but I mean, just just for what it's worth, it's been my soapbox, and you're probably bored with it. But you know, it seems to me money's going to get tighter and tighter. And I think the more discipline and rigor we put into the grant request form and the specific way the organization benefits the citizens of Gearheart is really the takeaway. If it's not there, why are we spending our taxpayer dollars outside of our city when that's what these grants are for?
Good point.
Yeah, but great point.
With this, I would like to offer that we donate $500 to the Seaside Scholarship Program because that the high schoolers in our area do go to that high school.
Yep.
It will benefit the younger people of Gearheart. And we've always done that.
And oh, by the way, state legislature is coming out with some new homeless benefits laws. City of Portland is too.
Right. We've got that. We've got that look forward to. It's going to be very interesting what we're going to be required to do.
Yep.
And expensive.
Yes.
Just for giggles, I did find Cedar's budget. And I'm trying to kind of tell us
And they submitted that with the application or did you just pull that down off their website?
This was in their application. Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
That wouldn't be that proactive.
So it's almost like they've got holy cow.
Their wages are 73%. Rent, three. Contracted consultants, 11. Travel supplies, 10. Unallocated, 4%.
So how how is that a nonprofit?
They are a service industry. I'm not sure how they do it exactly, but I know that they promote businesses within the community.
Wow.
Okay, well, I'm happy with what we've done so far. Does anyone have any other concerns or need to allocate any money to any other businesses?
I'd like to see the 500 to the Seaside Scholarships added.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm I'm happy with the scholarship. I will say I am concerned about the amount of money we're spending relative to the idea that we it will be harder to go through this process next year.
Because we're spending much?
Next year, less because we don't have as much in the savings anymore. So next year, you have a total of $25,000 to spend if you wanted to spend this fund to zero. If you wanted to keep money in to cash carry forward, just in case things, then you can leave it there. But moving forward, eventually, we're going to get to being able to own $20,000 a year.
Yeah.
It actually might be easier if we have more rigor and discipline in focusing on only grants that directly impact the citizens of Gearheart.
That could very well be the way we handle it next year because of this.
And and I mean, I'll be honest, I read some of the responses, and I saw some generic ho-hum candy answers, and then I saw some real good ones. So, you know.
Yeah, no, good points.
It's not a free ride.
So does anyone else have anything else they want to add to the state revenue sharing doc spreadsheet document? Is everyone good with this? Thank you for saying yes.
Yes, and also it might be a good thing for us to work towards having a discretionary, I don't know, we call it a mayor's fund or Gearheart Fund for emergencies that come up, not during the application round for our grants. Because something is always coming up that needs funding that is worthy. And if we don't have a budget for it, then we have to scramble or do a fundraiser. And some things are time sensitive that need a check written immediately. So having some thing held back for discretionary use is always a good thing.
A method that we could do is because we have 35, 300 to spend. If we spent it all, we spent 3,000. We've got 5,300 left over. We could put that into an emergency line that says emergency discretion. Uh, it was an expense. So that way it'll zero out. If we spend it, then so be it. If we don't, cash carry forward next.
Then it's there for next year.
I think that's an improvement.
Okay.
Wait, because I have a comment now that the discussion is kind of over. I'm as a grant writer, I'm totally against giving people grants that did not apply this time or applied late. I think that's just a slap in the face to everybody that did it on time and the way they should. And I'm also, I'm going to sound so crabby, I'm also not inclined to give grants to people that didn't even bother to show up. What? Couldn't turn on your computer? I'm just saying, as a grant writer, I'm I'm just I don't like the ifs. I just, you know, we do just letting you know, but I won't be this grumpy next time.
Well, you know, Rita, those are good points, and it could be part of our our effort to limit the people to show enough care and foresight to come in on time and show up during the process.
Yeah. It's just, yeah, they just can't mail in a piece of paper. I mean, and like last year, we gave a grant to Trails End. Not that they didn't deserve it, but they didn't submit a grant, and someone just said, well, they need some money. Let's just give them some money. And we all voted to do it, and they didn't even submit a grant. So it's just a tweak in the nose to the people that took the time to write a grant and show up.
Okay, that's very good.
I'm supposed to be happier. I'm just a crabby girl.
And I'd like to pile on. Sorry. But as a federal employee for 39 years, we need to ensure there's rigor and discipline in what we request and what we then fund on as far as the decision-making goes. This is taxpayer money we are giving people. So it's our, you know, our duty to make sure that it's not just, oh, nice to give money to people.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could I just make a comment? In the spirit of improvement, could we just do another revision to the grant application and put some of those things that we're talking about to add some rigor that we would like a presentation, three minutes or whatever? Make sure we have the P and L statement. You know, whatever else we need to add, if we could just maybe get some revisions of that so we have a better process going forward.
I would like to.
I think we could do that with a resolution at the next council meeting if it was so desired.
I guess, you know, the process is just a policy. I'm not sure that we need to do that. You know, Justine and I are taking notes. Justine, thumbs up if you got, you know, most of that.
Yeah, and if you if we could just take a look at a draft or something.
Thumbs up.
Yeah. Thanks.
And we will
So if we're done with this state revenue sharing fund, I'm going to turn it over to Chad. So we might be able to get through these last eight pages.
You've done a great job, Kerry.
You're an optimist, Kerry.
Yes, I know. But you know, I got to live somewhere.
All right. Getting there, folks. All right, state revenue sharing, next. My page 25, but I'm sorry, I think I'm going off of you folks moving forward.
Gearheart Road District, page 24.
I think it's 24. I have a page off because How you doing? You got it?
Let's keep going.
So State Road Gearheart Road District is fairly simple. We have the allocation that we're, you know, the taxes come in about $36,000 a year. Also bolstered this by $25,000 under the American Rescue Plan. The main reason for this is our transportation systems plan has also shown that we do not have enough money in this account to maintain roads. So I thought a small amount of infrastructure would be a good idea. Any questions? All right. State Street Fund. What we get for the State of Oregon for 100, the resource is at 375. We received about $100,000 a year. And H twenty-seven is how we spend those monies. Materials and services has the largest gain. And that's just if we need it. I know Mark has some plans, but nothing huge. Any questions about that?
Is that like pavement? Is that what that is?
Yeah, uh, that'll be pavement, contract services, uh, you know, some sidewalks could be in there also. But mostly roadway work in regards to patching um asphalt.
How about streetlights?
Streetlights are paid additional streetlights of constant city of Gearheart if we request them. The only part that we have to do moving forward is to uh pay monthly for the electricity being used. Uh, and I've learned that you can have an incandescent bulb, sodium high pressure bulb or LED, the rate is the same. The cost, uh, the savings of the electricity does not change the cost per pole.
Okay, I, I guess I used the wrong term, uh, stoplights.
Not to do with that.
No, couldn't do that.
No, and uh, you know, in the conversations I'm having with O Dot Stoplight runs, uh, you know, anywhere between five hundred uh and close to a million depending on the situation. So incredibly expensive, but we are talking about that in the T S P plan and potential grants.
I'm, I'm thinking Highway one oh one and Gearheart Loop.
And a speed camera, maybe?
Speed cameras? Oh, those are dangerous. Most towns have taken them out due to legal reasons.
Huh.
All right.
Found people doing too many other things and side speeding.
That, and it's pretty easy to beat in court and the cost of actually issuing all those tickets and going through all that legal process actually exceeds the revenue coming in.
H twenty-seven now?
Yes, ma'am, we have.
I, I actually, I have a question.
I, I was just gonna offer use dummy speed cameras.
Oh.
That's.
Yeah, what was it? If you use dummy cameras like at like your pool at a hotel and something happened and you don't have the liability in that.
Never mind, okay.
We, we do have the port portable radar uh sign that's working pretty well.
Highway one oh one would blow its mind.
Okay.
Dan, you had a question?
Yeah, um, so building maintenance under state street fund, is that the public works building that, that that money would go towards?
Uh, it could be, it could be used for any building maintenance. We generally do not spend uh much out of that. But yeah, if something happened, we can take care of it. Uh, I think I also increased that to kind of generally take care of all the buildings. Uh, we're getting ready to do some pretty good maintenance round. All right, no more questions.
It just, it just seems odd to me to have, have money for other buildings in a state street fund, but.
I, I guess you could say that we could use that towards buildings that we have our equipment in within uh that we use all of our uh equipment for working on the roads. Otherwise, we could just put it into materials and services and I could still, you know, but this allocate some money just for the building material, like a pole barn or something like that if we needed to go ahead and take care of it. We can only spend these monies for streets. All right, and the labor within it. So I can increase any other area if you'd like, but this, this gives us some flexibility. No other questions? Water reserve fund. Currently, we have one point three eight one million in that reserve fund. Uh, because of the seventy-five thousand dollars in addition plus some extra coming from the uh, this, none of this comes from the general fund. This is all coming from water revenue. So we're putting another hundred and fifty thousand dollars in. So by the end of this year, we have one point five six two, excuse me, at the end of next year. Police car reserve. Again, unbalanced should be sixty-seven, add another fifteen, we'll have eighty-three. And we have one car probably being replaced here within next year.
We have an electric vehicle.
Uh, no, that's a conversation uh that I'm sure Jeff would love to have with me. Uh, I'm sure we could, but uh EV charging, catching the crook across the county running out of battery. Who knows? But yeah, there's always conversation. So, but nothing scheduled as of yet. Fire apparatus and equipment. Getting a fund two hundred and forty-three thousand, transferring an additional thirty thousand dollars out of the general fund into here. Part of that is having to do with some additional funds that weren't really allocated for the uh incoming revenues from Wildland Fire. Part of what Kerry Smith was asking for the report during the last city council meeting. Thirty thousand dollars in addition I'm comfortable with and then Kerry will love. Councilor Smith will go ahead and report more as uh Justine and I get more comfortable.
It says sixty thousand.
Correct. I was looking at last year's was thirty thousand. I'm putting an additional thirty thousand in there also for a total of sixty thousand dollars going in this next fiscal year. We will be needing to replace one of our fire engines soon and they cost about seven hundred thousand equipped. Hazard mitigation fund. These dollars are coming from the general fund, increasing that by twenty thousand dollars. So that our resources and everything we have in there will be approximately a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Next page is the nine-one-one reserve fund. That, uh, after this year, we will be able to get rid of this entire page. We no longer take funds in from taxes from the state or nine-one-one. They all go to the individual cities that actually has the district center. Next page is public works major equipment, starting with a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, increasing that from the water fund for an additional ten thousand per total of thirty to bring our total resources up to one sixty, seven four four.
Are you saying that you're transferring out of the water fund thirty thousand to the Public Works Major Equipment Fund?
Yes.
I thought the water fund is only for the water fund according to charter and cannot used.
These uh, the reasoning on that is because the equipment that we use for everything within Gearheart, uh, a good portion of it is used for the water. So it is a uh applicable way to use those funds.
Oh, I don't know about that. I gotta look that up, Chad.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we didn't do that, then we would just continue it within the water fund and have to do a new line item within that. And then we would be able to spend it as we please. This is council control, of course. Building reserve fund, this is one increases uh from the uh little check that. Yes, the American Rescue Plan. Yes, for an additional ninety thousand dollars, normally for ten thousand dollars, that would give us a total of two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So primarily my thought was in uh future for building repair as far as infrastructure and it also gives us some money to uh get through some of the fire station uh design and things that we may have to do in the future before we receive taxes. All right. Next page is some supplemental information. Uh, that's kind of how these individual positions are divided out. I put a little bit more information in there. Any question about that? Talked about that earlier a little bit. I don't know if you got the next page or not. Um, that's just a uh, a notice calculation. I wouldn't worry about that. That's what the newspaper will receive based on what we do. The next important page is the salary page at the end, this will be your salary, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. This individually splits out the various positions that we have. Some of you may not be familiar with who does what. I'll add a column in there for next time for what department they're, the small team. The, some of the changes are a five percent increase for Christie Ficker for her year of service as per handbook. And then I'm posing an additional four thousand dollars be available for merit increase. Uh, and we'll include some changes on the um uh, on her job description. Uh, but that's something that's uh you don't absolutely have to spend. It's just a proposed and then what? You know, of course, Christie did a fantastic job of helping to run the city while I was gone. And her value is excellent. So I think Christie and uh Justine then will be even. Which I believe is appropriate. Steven Peterson is in there for five percent engagement bad and that's based on the time that they've worked here. Some things are on the engagement captains. Current proposed is thirty-three thousand and I'm showing sixty-four thousand.
That is a big jump.
That is a big jump. I mean, he's a good kid. Let me just double check what that's doing here real quick. It may change everything. Partner is looking at the Great. That is gonna make some money available throughout the budget.
Okay. Chad?
Yes, sir.
I've got a question about the Steven Peterson. Why is he getting a five thousand merit increase after four years? Actually, this will be his fifth year.
Uh, what that is, is part of the job description that Mark works. He is potentially, and that's just potential. He's potentially about to pass a major test uh in regards to uh water treatment and servicing the uh having the certifications to do a lot more difficult work around uh so that we can close the gap between Mark McFadden and that. And also he is going to be taking on more responsibility now that uh we had Drew Lee, who was at the top, that will, that additional along with him will bring him closer into what drew that. He's taking over Drew's position.
Okay.
Okay. So stand by for just a moment here. Wow, I do not see why that is happening. Uh, Justine, you wanna take a quick look at that? I'm on the, I'm in online in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget on the salaries page, looking for the reason that sixty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-two is showing up. I hit zero in there again. Vincent, everybody else looks accurate. It's just gauge.
Did you add the first wage and the second wage after his five percent? It comes out to sixty-six, doesn't it? Or sixty-four?
It does propose with step.
Yeah.
It does. So let me change that. Thank you. Easy man. I need to should just I'll just make it simple right now.
Looks like Justine's hi- higher date is in the air as well.
Yeah, sorry, that was on the scale. We'll fix that. Okay, so I fixed gauge Macbenn's to be proposed with step thirty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-nine. And that will change a few places within the budget. So let me do a quick check and make recommendation of where we should put those money. This won't take me very long. Okay, so part time, so utility workers and parks. More and state streets. All right, I'm gonna check state streets first. State streets. Now a difference of six thousand two hundred and eighty, I can add that into materials and services for state streets. Which would be most appropriate mine line. Everybody disagrees, let me know. But it does need to stay within that fund. Four thousand. Oh, that's easy. Okay, that'll bring materials and services if needed up to two hundred and thirty thousand. Maybe fifty-six. That brings the difference between uh expenses and revenue to zero. So I think that's appropriate. Uh, the next one is the water fund. So H two O expenses. And resources. And the difference of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. Well, this is good. So twenty-one thousand nine eighty-one, make up the falls in here. And go back to H two expenses. Uh, see here, discounting down, insurance, this is good, supplies, this chemical, electricity. I would then allocate. Because I think they're well funded, I would put that into water purchase if necessary. And then if we did not purchase that amount of water, we would go into the next year's cash carry forward for that fund. Does anybody disagree with that? Okay.
Three reasonable plan.
Okay, thank you, sir. So I'm just gonna go back to I'll be that.
Just call me on my cell phone if I nod off.
Okay.
Air horn. Air horn.
So that'll bring that up to 370 from 350 to 371,981. And Justin, if I'm doing anything goofy, let me know, but that does work for the fund. And resources of 96 cents. Six cents. So. Resources. I'm getting that guy's.
Well, we were three lines away from being done. With the budget. So who found this error? Three lines from the finish line. I don't know. Just letting you know.
Just a couple more minutes of patience.
Hey, while we're while while we're waiting for this to get sorted out. My wife Wendy came to me with a great question. Why do Gearhart residents have to pay to use the Seaside Library?
Oh. I can answer that question because Seaside Library is funded.
Because we're not in the city of Seaside.
Of Seaside. Yes, so all of our, all of the library's revenue comes from franchise fees from the city that are paid to the city. And extra taxes that the city people pay to belong to the city, so.
Right, is there a modicum amount of money the city of Gearhart can pay? The library to give a blanket? Free entry?
About 10 years ago, well, yeah, you could pay a fee, an annual fee. And when I was there last time, I think it was, well, it was $50, but I think they raised it since I left.
But with the library except like $1,000. I'm just throwing this out there. A thousand dollars from Gearhart City.
Well, well, when we were trying to build the library, the citizens of Gearhart came together and raised $10,000 to donate to the city of Seaside for their new library building. And but they never got a lower out of district fee from that. It was just the kindness of the citizens of Gearhart.
Oh.
But here's, here's the kicker. Back when I was there, the citizens of Seaside paid more in their taxes to fund the city than the out of district people paid to join. So it was cheaper if you live, if you didn't live in the city, but a lot of people didn't know that.
Ah, interesting, okay.
Parks and Rec is the same way.
Rec is the same.
Okay, so it's like the Two Alaton District. Near in Beaverton. Yeah, okay, I got it. Yeah. Yep.
A lot of jurisdictions, the libraries are run by the counties. And so you can have a library card for that's a county and you both not class of county because that's one of the exceptions. But Multnomah County runs the library. Washington County runs its libraries. So you can go to any library in the county and not pay a fee. Yeah.
Guys, I think Chad's done.
Yep.
I moved, I moved the money, you know, the approximately 30 some thousand dollars in the park. I already told you about the other two in the parks. I added it to capital expenditure equipment. I didn't think you'd mind having an additional 3,000 or $3,000 into that. And the only thing left over is when we did my review, we talked about a potential raise. The information that I have is the last raise that I received other than cola was in 1617. And that was a 6.5% rate. Since 1617, I've been running off of column. So you have the option to change my salary or not based on last. Now we do have $30,000 available from my last mistake. I'm kidding. So that's your option to do now. I'm looking at the. Budget sheet salary. And I'm currently at with the proposed call for the year 93,105. And it is your option to make any change if you desire. Okay, I'm not hearing any. So is that to keep it the same?
I would go with the cola. I Chad, it's nothing personal, but. What has happened is not. Something you reward. As far as I'm concerned, until you see that. The path is walked and is true and. Not being too vocal about it. I, I would be against anything other than a cola raise right now.
All right, is that the council's decision?
If we want to make a change mid-year, do we have the funds to do that? Is there a way to do that? Or do we have to budget it now?
You don't have to budget it now. You could make a change when you desire. It would just, you know, you probably wouldn't even. Well, salaries are set by the budget committee. We have to bring the budget committee back together. And then make a change and then amend the budget through the ordinances. So it would be a bit of a bit of a hike, but can be done.
The budget committee only makes recommendations to the council, I thought, for wages. And the council is the one that has the final say. So wouldn't it be just up to the council to say at this time because of. Of merit for. Following through on certain items, we find that the city administrator is going to have a wage increase. But we don't need the budget committee or anything like that. Because we're as a budget committee, all we're doing is recommending to the council.
Now I'll refer to playing a play, talking about the. The salary committee for the. Yeah, the salary committee in the past, there was an actual separate committee that would take care of the salaries, make recommendations.
Committee.
But we have used in the past, the. Actual entire budget committee as also the personnel committee.
Actually, Paulman told me, Paulman told me the city council was the but was the personnel committee. When we first opened the can of worms of the person of the personnel manual. I guess what I'm comfortable with is putting in like a 3% raise as a placeholder for the council to act on when there is a consensus that Chad has. Worked through. Things.
Yeah, that, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, it sounds very reasonable.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do a quick calculation here. We'll have to make an adjustment in the budget.
So since, since we don't have the corrected budget in front of us and the amount is not really material to the total budget amount. Could we just instruct you to make those changes and approve the budget?
Yeah, let's do that.
I have to suggest one more change because if that 3% increase would be 279317. That has to be removed from another portion of the budget. And I'm going to go to administrative to look at that. That's where my salary is in. And so I would recommend then. Reducing the legal fees from $25,000 to the new number to make up for. Does anybody disagree with that?
Sounds good. It's fine.
Okay, so are we good with accepting? Oh, excuse me. Are there any visitors for or against a program or programs that wish to speak at this time? Having here none. I'm going to announce that if we need another budget meeting. The committee meets on May 7th, 2021. Do I hear a motion to accept the budget as corrected and amended?
I move to accept the budget as corrected and amended for the next fiscal year.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
I third it.
And thirded and fourth and fifth.
May I have a vote of yays for it?
Yay.
Yay. Yay.
Those against? I believe it is passed on to the council unanimously.
Yay.
Fantastic. Okay.
Buddy.
Appreciate it.
And it only took three and a half hours.
Yeah, well. That's not a record. So I'd like to adjourn this meeting on a whim.
I'd like to thank Chris's participation very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Chad. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Justin.
Maybe I'll.
Failed a half hour ago.
Chris, maybe I'll see you all on the golf course.
Okay, there, there we go. Paulina, Rita, Justine, Chad, goodbye.
Have a good evening, all.
Bye bye, Dan.
See ya. Take care, everybody. Bye.
Bye.
Bye. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's close the. The meeting. Yeah, Kristy and I can go give those to you, but Kristy will get to that thing. Did I start? Yeah.